...her daddy and her child moving out.
All right, bye.
Out.
She had sent it to three emails.
All right, everybody ready? Good. Good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, December 3, 2024. We welcome you here. I know we're starting just a little bit early tonight. We have another engagement to do after this meeting, so we're going to try to conduct our business for this and then get there later on this evening. So thank you for coming out a little bit early today. As we always do, we'll start out with a moment of silence and remain standing for our pledge allegiance to our country. As we go to the time of prayer, I would like for you to please keep Diane Teague, our good friend and colleague Paul Teague's wife who passed away this week, please keep him and his family in your thoughts and prayers. Kind of unexpected, I think, and so we will be thinking about Paul. Paul is a great friend. He works for the Western Piedmont Council of Governments, and we've worked with him quite a bit and have for many, many years. He's one of our great friends here in the community. So please keep them in your thoughts and prayers. Now, please join me. Moment of silence. Thank you. Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our first item on our agenda tonight is our FY 2023/2024 Annual Audit Report, and I welcome Cynthia, I know her better as Cindy Randolph, our CPA and PLLC, and she will present that to us tonight. Welcome. Thank you for coming down the mountain.
Sure.
And I hope you get back up safely when you go back.
I'll drop safe, so yeah. First of all, I'd like to thank the council, the staff, mayor for allowing me to do the audit again this year. It's always a pleasure working with Donna and Scott. They do a fabulous job with the finances of the city. The audit has been submitted. Here's the audit. It has been submitted to the Local Government Commission and has been approved by the Local Government Commission, which is good. I did issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. This is the normal type of an opinion you'd want in an audit of your financial statements. The city did have a single audit in accordance with the Uniform Guidance, which means your federal funding was $750,000 or more. You spent more than $750,000 in federal funds, so you had to have a single audit. The audit, I did audit as a major, as major federal programs, the Clean Water Reviving Fund and the Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Funds for federal purposes, and then as major programs for the state were the Powell Bill Program and the State Capital Infrastructure Fund. For the June 30, 2024 audit, we did not have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in compliance or in internal controls that needed to be noted in the audit. Okay, and we'll hit a few quick points real. Mayor said make it quick, so hit a few quick points here for you. You guys do have in your packet, Donna, I think, put in the packet, financial highlights and by fund. I'm not going to go over those numbers because you've seen those. The Local Government Commission, each year they, they publish the median fund balance as a percent of your general, as a percent of general expenditures for all North Carolina municipalities. So for a city in North Carolina that is about the size of City of Lenore, the median at June 30, 24 was 46%. So that is your available fund balance as a percent of general expenditures. The City of Lenore's unassigned fund balance for the general fund was $18,852.98, representing 83.72% of total general fund expenditures. And the median's 46, so you guys are well above that. This is an increase for Lenore of $2,144,652 in unassigned fund balance over the previous year. The city's debt decreased by $1,886,000 in outstanding principal. The city maintained a tax collection rate of 97.43%, and again, the statewide average at June 30, 24 was 97%, so you're above that. The Water and Sewer Fund, they had a change in net position or a net income of $1,152,244. So overall, for the June 30, 24 audit, the city is in excellent financial condition. And I think as the council and staff, you guys should commend yourself for a really good, excellent audit year. Any questions? I went really quick.
Any questions of Cindy? David?
Comments?
Comment, go ahead.
Comments?
We'd love to take credit for all this, but you, you mentioned the names of those who are responsible for it, between Scott and Donna and all these folks out here.
That's right.
They make us look pretty good.
They do. They do a great job.
Yeah, they certainly do. But no questions, just that comment.
Okay. You're our expert up here, so if you don't have any questions, we're all right.
Cindy's the expert.
Well, yeah. I said you're up here, not up there. No other questions. Cindy, thank you. We appreciate that. Great job, as always. We appreciate it. Donna, staff, thank y'all for such a wonderful report. We appreciate what you do and, and keep everything straight, and we can't ask for anything more than that, and it's, it's great. Any comments from that? Scott, thank you for your leadership and what you do.
Get the folks out there.
Guide, guide everybody in the right way, so it's a, it's a, it's a great team, and we're all proud to be a part of it, so. So thank you for that.
Thank you, guys. Hope everyone has a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and it'll be here again before you know it.
You're exactly right.
Time flies.
Christmas is three weeks.
That's crazy.
I will, at this point, entertain a motion to accept the audit as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the audit as presented by our CPA.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stevens makes a motion to approve the audit as presented by our CPA Cindy Randolph. No other discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you very much. Thank you. Drive safely.
She's out of here. Get up the mountain.
Okay, we're going to move past the matter scheduled for public hearing. That's not till, till 6 o'clock when we advertise that, so we'll come back to that. So we're going to move down to the consent agenda items right now, and that consists of minutes of the committee, the whole meeting of Tuesday, October 22. Item B are minutes of the City Council meeting of Tuesday, November 5. Item C is a contiguous annexation petition, intersection of 3, US 321 and the Blair Fork Road. This is our approval of a resolution directing the City Court to check the annexation petition for sufficiency for property comprised of 4.07 acres and located at the intersection of US 321 and Blair Fork Road, NC PIN number 2840657903, and to call for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, January 7, 2025. The parcel is located within the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction, is zoned as RR, Rural Residential, and is contiguous with the Lenore city limits. Item D are amendments. This is for capital project budget ordinance. The staff in the Western Piedmont Council of Governments recommend approval of three capital budget, project budget ordinance amendments as follows. Number one, the capital project budget ordinance amendment for the FY 2022 Uniform Consortium Home Program in the amount of $321,825.61, as submitted. The Lenore, of course, is the lead entity. Item two is the capital project budget ordinance amendment for the FY 2023 Uniform Consortium Home Program in the amount of $114,756.24. Item three is the capital project budget ordinance amendment for FY 2024 Uniform Consortium Home Program to reallocate funding with zero net effect on the total budget as submitted. Item E is the agreement between the Western Piedmont Council of Governments Disaster Recovery Services. Approval of this agreement between the City of Lenore and the COG for assistance with disaster recovery services and effective management of disaster recovery efforts as related to the tropical storm Helene as submitted. And item F is the amendment for the capital project budget ordinance. This is a recommended approval of a budget amendment to close out the American Rescue Plan Act project approved on June 15 of 2021. Those are your consent agenda items as presented. I will open it up for any discussion, question, whatever you might have, and then a motion.
What was item F one more time?
Mr. Rescue Plan.
Okay.
ARPA funding?
Yeah, ARPA.
Gotcha.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve items A through F as presented.
Thank you. Councilmember Thomas makes a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through F as, as presented. No other discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda are requests and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone here that would like to address the council, this is the time to do so. And don't see anybody rushing the podium, so we, hopefully good. All right, we'll move on to we, reports and boards of commissions we do not have tonight. We'll move on to the report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mayor of council, couple items for information this evening. The Christmas light show will run nightly on the downtown square from 6 o'clock to 10 p.m. through January 1. City of Lenore will be hosting a virtual open house tomorrow evening, December 4, beginning at 6 o'clock, to provide an update on the new Living Lenore 2045 Conference of Plan. Staff has posted a link for the comp plan. It's lenort2024.com. This will go back and let folks participate online to go back and get feedback for our comp plan, but also our Park Recreation Master Plan. There's a survey at that link as well. I encourage folks to go take that, to go back and share what your hopes and dreams are for future park recreation programs and facilities. The Starry Night Christmas Parade we held this Friday night, December 6, at 6:30 p.m. in downtown Lenore. Bundle up, it's going to be cold, I understand. Carriage rides are also available this year downtown, beginning December 9, the 10th, the 11th, the 16th, and 18th. They run from 5 o'clock till 8 p.m. The last, the rides last for about 15 minutes. Tickets are available online at downtownlenorenc.com. Encourage folks to go there, to go back and register for those. Our loose leaf, loose leaf pickup of leaves collection is underway. We did the first pass in November. We expect another pass for everybody in town in December and also in January, weather permitting. And be sure to go back and separate items like bricks, rocks, sticks away from your leaves to go back and be picked up, and also keep them behind the curb line and out of the storm drains. The ABC Board will meet on Thursday, December 12 at 2 p.m. Our annual luminary display will be held at Blue Ridge Memorial Park, that's on Friday, December 13, at 6 o'clock. A rain date will be Friday, December 20, at 6 p.m. as well. The City Council will not be meeting on December 17. That meeting has been canceled. Our next meeting will be held on January 7, 2025. Also note, city also be closed for Christmas on Tuesday, December 24 through the, through Thursday, December 26. And also be closed New Year's Day on January 1, which is, I think, a Wednesday. And then lastly, curbside Christmas tree pickup will begin the week of January 6, and so encourage folks to get your Christmas trees, again, your, not your artificial trees.
I haven't got mine up yet.
So put those out on January 6 for pickup. Tonight, we have one item for council action. We have a minimum housing ordinance. This is for 309 Glendale Street Northwest. Staff recommends you approve the order of abatement directing staff to abate the minimum housing violations by demolishing the structure, again, at 309 Glendale Street. This is NC PIN 2749982830, or a partial ID 09-8-2-49. If you look in your packet, you'll see the photos of the property and the condition of that structure, and it's time for that thing to go down, I believe. So if you have questions, I know Hannah's in the back of the room, I could answer those. But we ask your consent to go back and move forward with the abatement.
Okay, you heard the recommendation from the city manager and staff, approval of an order of abatement directing the staff to abate the minimum housing violations by demolishing the structure at 309 Glendale Street Northwest. Any discussion or question on this proposal? I'll entertain a motion when you're ready.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the abatement as, as presented.
A motion from Councilmember Beal that we agree to approve the minimum housing ordinance abatement as presented. No other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to any reports of our city attorney, Mr. Rohr, at this time?
Nothing at this time. Do have something for closed session.
Okay.
Shouldn't take too long, no action.
Okay. And I don't have anything from mayor's office other than the fact that just to say thank you to all of our staff for the Christmas decorations and everything you guys have all done. John, I know your staff and guys have done a great job. We appreciate it very much, and everybody seems to be really enjoying. Come, I come downtown about every night, and people are there enjoying it, so we appreciate all the hard work with that and everything that's been going on, put that together.
I just want to mention Councilmember Perkins and Thomas and all the folks involved in Turkey Tuesday. It was a great success, but you want to add anything you folks were?
Well, as usual, it was a great success, and it only happened because of our city and our people making donations unselfishly to help feed our community, and we enjoyed, I think, it was 380 some turkeys that we gave away, and everybody seemed to enjoy it. We didn't have any hookups or hangups, or anybody got mad or anything, so again, thank the City of Lenore and all you guys for coming out and helping us. Chiefs, thank you guys and your guys for helping us direct traffic. Phillip, and I don't want to start calling names, but thank you everybody.
You just did.
Yeah. Yeah, all that's true. We'll just look forward to next year, but it only happens because, like, everybody comes together, so we're looking forward to year 11, and thank you guys again.
Thank you guys for what you do to put that together every year. It's very, very successful. I know you have fun while you're doing it, even though it's a lot of work going on out there, that's for sure.
It's a little chilly this, this year, too.
Yeah, a little chilly.
Wasn't bad as well last year. Oh my God.
Okay, thank you for that. Anything else from any other council member? We'll go ahead and go to the closed session. All right, we have a closed session that we will now go into to do this quickly before we come back. At 6 o'clock, we have to wait till then to start the public hearing, so we'll do the closed session now. This is a, under North Carolina General Statute 143-318, subsection 11, subsection A, subsection 3, to consult with the city attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the city council. The purpose of the closed session is for the city council to receive advice and consideration, consider, and give instructions to the attorney concerning pending litigation, Mac Tech Properties LLC and Big Bear Paul LLC versus the City of Lenore 24 CBS 1515, Collville County, on that. So we will now go into closed session.
Make a motion to go in closed session.
Oh, yeah. We got a motion to go into closed session from Councilmember Perdue. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We're now in closed session. We'll be back in hopefully 10 minutes, if the most.
10 minutes.
We have a motion to come out of closed session from Councilmember Perkins. Soon as one more councilman comes out. All right. Again, we have a motion from Councilmember Perkins to come out of closed session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. We're now back in open session, and there was no action from the public, from the closed session for tonight. Okay, we'll now go to item two on here, which is our matter scheduled for public hearing. This is, item A is Conditional Zoning Ordinance Amendment. We'll hold this hearing to consider approval of a Conditional Zoning Ordinance Amendment regarding the Conditional Zoning-9 ordinance, SCZ9, North Carolina PIN number 2759433724, adding cluster subdivision development standards to reflect a minimum setback of five feet and a minimum lot size of 3,600 square feet for the property located off of McLean Drive Extension. The applicant is Lenore Home Builders, Christian Jones, and staff recommends approval of the ordinance amendment with the proposed two conditions as described above and as based on the consistency statement as follows. The proposed amendment is consistent with the land use policy concepts in the Conference of Plan that call for distinctive neighborhoods that preserve open space, enhance walkability, accommodate a range of housing types, use stormwater measures as community amenities, and foster a strong sense of place. The proposed development is consistent with the future land use map, which identifies the parcel as medium density residential and mixed use with commercial. While commercial uses aren't proposed, the densities and mix of housing types proposed are consistent with the larger area accommodating a mix of uses. The rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest because it provides a much-needed single-family housing near US 321 Commercial Quarter. Note, the planning board reviewed and supports the existing ordinance and changes proposed to reflect and allow for future housing development opportunities in Lenore. I will open the public hearing, and I will recognize our Director of Planning, Hannah Williams.
Thank you so much. Good evening, council. So tonight, we have a couple of tweaks to an existing conditional zoning ordinance. This is for the area behind Lowe's Hardware and, and north of that tract as well, off McLean Drive. If you look at the existing ordinance on, starting on page six of your packets tonight, or where the conditions began on page eight, item six, density, and item 14, phasing, they indicate that cluster subdivision was a permitted use, but they did not give development standards for how, how clustered the homes could be. So Lenore Home Builders has proposed a very, a small lot size at 3,600 square feet and a side setback of five feet, and this would be for a single-family home cluster subdivision. And, and that's pretty much the only change. All of the amenities, road layout that would be required, road connections that would be required, none of that is changing, and the overall unit count is, is not changing. And that would be whether it was townhomes, apartments, or single-family, the unit count is staying the same. Actually, the total units proposed by Lenore is around 100 less than what, what the conditional zoning ordinance would provide for today. So that's pretty much it, but I am hopeful for any questions that you might have.
On those lot sizes, is that on the entire property, both left side and right side of?
Yes, yeah. Mm-hmm. That would be proposed for anywhere where single-family is allowed, which would be all three of the sections.
Any other questions for Hannah? Okay, hearing none, thank you. We are in the public hearing. If there's anyone who would like to address the council concerning this conditional zoning ordinance amendment in the public hearing, this is the time to do so.
No further questions.
Yet.
As far as the house size, what is the maximum house size that can go on that size of a lot?
Ooh, I'm not sure off the top of my head. I don't have that available right now. I could try to calculate it quickly for you, but house size is not, is not defined currently in the conditional zoning ordinance, but if you give me just a couple minutes, I could figure that out for you.
Is there, is Lenore planning on a, an example size on those lots?
Hmm, I'm not ex, I, I haven't, I haven't seen a potential house yet at this time. There would be a mixture of sizes.
From what to what?
I, I'm not exactly sure. I wouldn't be able to tell you off the top of my head, and I don't want to say it in a public hearing.
I understand.
Right now.
Okay.
Just as a matter of reference, the Westford, the Westford Village lots are about 4,000 square feet, and those houses are up to 1,800, 1,800 square feet on, on those lots. They go anywhere from 1,200 to 1,800. And they're, they're also-
They're 400 square feet larger than the ones that were proposed here.
Yes, and they're also on a five-
Five foot setback.
-setback on the side.
Okay, thank you. Again, we're in the public hearing. Anyone would like to address the council, this is the time to do so. Okay, seeing no one?
I'll just leave it, please.
Okay, if you'll please come up to the podium and give us your name and address.
My name is Barry Smith. I live at 520 Gulf U Court, which is in the Woodridge Development.
Thank you.
My question was, I originally thought, by looking at the maps, this land, it kept saying it's at the rear entrance of Lowe's. So I assumed it was that one continuous property that was behind Lowe's, but now apparently it's also including what's to the north of McLean Drive. Am I correct on that?
She had, yes, she's-
Okay.
Yeah, it's been that way the whole time. North of McLean Drive and Lowe's rear entrance road.
So that's, uh, we'll come through Huntington Woods, the entrance to it.
Yes.
Can I pull the map up? Can we have the gas pull the map up?
I can try to pull it up as well.
You probably-
That's just the end of-
Probably not.
We can get it, it might just- Well, it shouldn't take long, just pull it up. Won't take long, but. It's the same track of land you did the conditions on before.
Question please on-
Yeah, we did this, this track before. It's the same track. Will this land north of McLean Drive also include what you call cluster housing, small lots, basically 3,800 square foot lots? Okay. So that's a, a kind of a small dense area. I was just curious. This is going to be a-
I'll show you. But they're trying to bring up. So this is Lowe's.
Right.
This is McLean Drive.
Okay, so it's-
And this is the existing Huntington.
Right, so I'd noticed all this, and then I saw this changed colors here, is that-
I'm not exactly-
There's the map going up.
I think the colors indicate elevation and how much-
Okay.
There's a map now.
Oh, perfect. Um, we were looking at... So this is a very rough site plan, and right, right here is Lowe's Hardware. This is the rear entrance road behind Lowe's, and then here is McLean Drive. This is the existing partially built-out Huntington Woods neighborhood, so there would be a connection through Huntington. That was a requirement of the zoning ordinance already. And so, yeah, there would be, the, the developer is proposing to cluster homes on both sides of McLean. developer is proposing to cluster homes on both sides of McLean.
Thank you, sir.
Come up for the microphone. Thank you.
What's the number of people that's supposed to be living in these houses? Like, how many per household and how many houses total?
It'll be 450 units.
And how many people per unit?
We don't regulate.
Regulate that, yeah.
Okay, so 450?
450 currently.
And they're all the same? That's how much square foot per lot? Is that what I mean?
Hannah, you may want to describe what's permitted a day versus what the.
Sure. So this is being proposed as 450 units, and a major subdivision would come later, where we would be able to comment on the entire layout. These are rules that are gonna guide development in the future. So we don't have every single detail right now, but what's there today? Today, it is a single-family zoning district, R12. It would require 12,000 square foot lots, but on the acreage that is here today, 157, 155 acres, you could have 550 single-family lots. And but this developer is proposing cluster subdivision development standards and has said that they would build 450 units and preserve a lot of the open space, preserve a lot of the trees and wooded tracks around these cul-de-sacs and streets that you see developed. So I think that answers all the questions. Okay.
Is this public housing or private, or both?
Private.
Okay. And is the traffic, is there gonna be an issue coming in and out of like that area?
We've already studied that in the previous, when we ruled on this previously in the fall, we had traffic studies where that was determined, not determined to be an issue. And actually, this is less than what was approved back in the spring.
Yeah. Excuse me, what was your name again, sir?
Rich Miller.
Rich Miller?
Yes, sir.
Okay. See, we need to put it in a minute. And your address?
Piscatachura.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll also state for the record that they are scoping a traffic impact analysis with DOT right now. Sometimes it doesn't make sense to take every step before you have your approvals in place.
Okay. Any further questions? Yes, sir, come on up.
Cliff Anderson, Hybritean Drive. Is sewer going to be provided for all of those, or are some of those gonna have to have septic systems? Do you know?
We would have mandatory sewer connections.
Mandatory. I suppose our system can handle all those additional houses without a problem. These are, if I'm not mistaken, up to 10 feet apart. That's the five-foot setback, right? So that means 10 foot from house to house. Okay, I want to make sure I understand. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, anyone else that'd like to address the council? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and I'll turn it over to council for any discussion and/or motion.
Mr. Mayor, this, again, it fits the plan that the city set forth. It also hits one of our major priorities that we defined as a council back during our budget process for trying to find affordable private housing. And this helps accomplish that, so I will make a motion to approve with the conditions required the matter before us.
Thank you. A motion from Councilmember Perdue that we approve the conditional zoning ordinance amendment as presented tonight. If there's no other question, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank y'all for being with us this evening. Anything else to come before us tonight? If not, we stand adjourned.
Hey, Dave.